Good evening. The October 13, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a relevant item or matters which the Board personally takes action, you can first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board's secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Yeah.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. James Jackson, our community liaison, will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the prayer this evening. Jackson, would you please come forward? Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. How are you all doing this evening?
Great.
Thank you so much for letting us come. We're here tonight to talk a little bit about the upcoming event with the School Board called Red Ribbon Week. We hold this annually within our school systems and throughout the community. This year's theme is called "What Is Your Natural High?" This is to get students talking about what can they do as a natural high instead of doing some type of drug or alcohol. This year also, their shirts were provided by CASA. It has a little description of what the theme is and it gets people to put on the back of the shirts what is their natural high. Mine is actually fishing. My son, who's wearing another shirt, is a sports. He loves pretty much every kind of sport you can do. So, we just want to talk a little bit about the history of Red Ribbon real quick. It did start off with Officer Camir- excuse me, Camirana, who was killed unfortunately by drug traffickers in 1985. That's kind of what was the mindset and the start of Red Ribbon Week to get everybody to start talking about it nationally. This year, Red Ribbon Week is going to be put on October 20th through the 23rd. On October 20th, we're going to have our annual kickoff at the Ocal Police Department. At the kickoff, you're going to see wonderful events take place such as a mobile skate park, a stunt motorcycle driver. There's going to be music. We're going to have some dancers performing. We're going to have some super duper jacked up cars and trucks there too for the kids. I believe there's supposed to be some bouncy houses. And of course, Mojos is catering the event, so there will be free food on premises for you. And of course, Mojos is awesome. Their servers are wearing this shirt in their restaurants for the next two weeks, this week and next week, also to promote Red Ribbon and the annual kickoff that's going to be occurring. So, we'd like to say again thank you to CASA, who is our main supporter and sponsor for this event. They've purchased these shirts for us to wear. They've also put in other types of manpower and many hours behind the operations of this event to make it successful. Not alone, they also put in $500 per school who wins the first place. We have elementary, middle, and high school first-place winners for the school spirit. That will be occurring throughout Red Ribbon Week, and the judging will take place that Friday on the 23rd. They also win a traveling trophy with hopefully of being able to recognize them here at the Board at a later date and time if it's okay with you guys. The only other thing I'd like to say in regards to this is we would love for any Board members and/or School Board employees to come out to support this event at the annual kickoff to show that we're all united in this front and it takes place. We really want to thank you for your time. Is there any questions that I could help answer?
October the 20th, and what is the time?
It is from 5:30 to 7:30.
Okay. Thank you.
My microphone's turned on.
23rd?
The annual kickoff is on the 20th. It's at the Ocal Police Department. It's going to be in the parking lot. You will not miss it if you drive by it.
Thank you.
And then the judging for the school spirit contest happens on October 23rd. If you would please, everybody stand, and we'd like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all again so much for allowing us the time. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman Boynton. Board, I recommend approval of the agenda for the October 13, 2015 School Board meeting with the materials in the Board packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Can move.
Second.
I have motion by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 27, 2015 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, September 3, 2015 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, September 8, School Board Meeting, September 17, Administrative Briefing and Work Session, September 22, School Board Meeting. I need a motion and a second, please.
Can move.
Second. Can move by Mrs. King, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? All question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. Individuals who have completed the appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM will now have the opportunity to address the Board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the Board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the School Board's attorney to explain some additional points. Mr. Lake?
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you plan to address the School Board tonight, please be aware of the School Board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Kevin Christian or from one of the front tables. Under the School Board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least 48 hours prior to the meeting to the School Board's assistant. AV presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families, is strictly prohibited. Based on time consideration, the School Board by a majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move the public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Ms. Boynton?
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary?
No more speakers.
Thank you. All right, moving forward. Board, may I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 6.11 as employment defined? May I have a motion and a second, please?
Can move.
Second.
Move by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent?
This Board policy has been revised to clarify wording, update statutory authority, and laws implemented. I also need to explain that the leadership of the Marion Education Association, the MEA, contacted the administration last week expressing a concern regarding the proposed modifications to Board Policy 6.11. After meeting with the MEA leadership yesterday, we have mutually agreed to propose to you tonight a modification to the first paragraph which had been added by our attorney, Lake. This new modification is reflected in the green highlight on the copy that I have handed out to everyone. So, if you all look at that document for just a moment, please. In the first paragraph, you can see that the word "full-time" has been replaced with the word "permanent," and a clarifying sentence was added to the end of the first paragraph. All that is in green to indicate that each of our three union contracts may have language which would supersede the language of this policy. Based on the mutual agreement between MEA leadership, my administration, and with the support of Attorney Lake, I would like to suggest an amendment to the Board Policy 6.11 be offered in accordance with the handout now before you.
Thank you, sir. You have heard the Superintendent's recommendations for amendment to Board Policy 6.11. Does a Board member wish to offer the recommended amendment?
I'm willing to offer an amendment to the motion. I'd like to replace the word "full-time" in the first paragraph with the word "permanent" and add a clarifying sentence to the end of the first paragraph that reads, "Collective bargaining agreements with school district may modify or restrict the following employment definitions."
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Second for the amendment.
A second for the amendment?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? This motion to amend the- all those in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
I can't vote. I can't vote.
Would you like to vote in affirmative, Ms. Stacy? Yes. She says she's not ready to vote.
I don't know what happened. Did you go into the correct agenda sign on?
And the motion passes 5-0. This motion to amend has passed unanimously. Excuse me. At this time, I declare- at this time, I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Board for this revised Board policy? Anyone present? Any more discussion with the Board? There been no further discussion. I call for a motion. I call for a vote on the motion as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Try again. We got it. Can we get it out?
And the motion carries 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 8.36 as transporting students in school, board-owned or private vehicles? May I have a motion and a second, please?
Can move.
Second.
Move by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent?
This Board policy has been revised to clarify procedures when transporting students and update laws implemented.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Board for this revised Board policy? Board, is there any discussion?
None.
All right, then, call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Can move.
Second.
Has been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Ms. Stacy, you have any- Stacy, you vote?
Oh, I thought I hit it, sorry.
Thank you. And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? Various musical instruments and accessories valued at $2,068 to Danellan Middle School from Howard Glick and Patricia Cronk. Various electronic supplies and devices valued at $1,350 to Marion Techna Institute from Paula O'Neill, and $1,500 to Wyamina Park Elementary School from Central Christian Church. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Can move.
Second. Move by Mrs. King, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? I call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Mrs. Ely, would you please do our things for us tonight?
Sure. As always, we're so appreciative of anybody in our community that sees the need to help our schools. And to give those musical instruments to Danellan Middle, I took a look at the list. It's great to know that our kids will have instruments to play on, and it was donated by Howard Glick and Patricia Cronk. And then the electronic supplies, $1,350 to MTI from Paula O'Neill. Thank you so much, Ms. O'Neill. And then Central Christian Church, which is really close to Wyamina, I believe is their business partner, had donated $1,500. That's a total of $4,918. Thank you so much, and keep on giving. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, October 22, 2015, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the Work Session is to receive a validity report update on Florida's standards assessment, as well as review the following Board policies. Revised Board Policy 2.22, Board Meetings; Revised Board Policy 2.20, Responsibilities and Authority of the Board; Revised Board Policy 3.20, Responsibilities of a Superintendent; and a new Board Policy regarding the Responsibilities of the Legal Department. Board, if you can mark your calendars, a joint meeting with elected officials from Marion County and other municipalities regarding school planning and interlocal agreement has been scheduled for Wednesday, October 28, 2015, at 1:00 PM in the Marion County Growth Services Training Room. Thank you. At this time, Board members, do you have any comments? I want to start with you, Mr. James.
I just want to just say this. So far this year is just moving so fast, and most people don't realize that we're getting close to the halfway point. And again, I know we have been talking about data, and I have talked with the Superintendent, and we will be bringing you a packet, bringing you some information on the data based on our strategic plan. And this is one of the things that we got from our meeting down there, that we need to have data supporting our strategic plan. And I have been working and talking with him in terms of bringing that to you. So, you will- I think you will be presently surprised to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. King?
I don't have any business or concerns today.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Stacy.
Yes, I would just like to remind the school district, Mr. Tomlin, that I'm looking for the principals. Statute 1003.27, 2A, 2B states that each public school principal or principals designated shall notify the district school board of each minor student under its jurisdiction who accumulates 15 unexcused absences in a period of 90 calendar days. That doesn't mean we wait until the end of the 90 calendar days and say, oh, by the way, in, you know, October, they missed 15 days all in one month. I would like to know this as we go along. I don't want to wait till the end of the 90 days. And I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding, partly on my fault, not making it clear that I didn't want to wait till the full 90 days. I want to know. And if there's a problem with Skyward or any of the computer systems doing it, each principal probably has this data. I don't care if he gives it to me because actually, it's not the superintendent or the head of Student Services that's supposed to supply it. The statute says we will get it from the principals or the designee. So, I'm looking for that information. And I do want to remind the principals that I'm looking for the unexcused absences, the three unexcused absences, to be included in that number as an unexcused day also in with those 15 days, as the Code of Conduct says. So, especially elementary students. And in fact, we can even bring it into high school because we also say in our Code of Student Contact, one thing that I wanted added, and this is why, that I wanted added to our Code of Student Contact, a pattern of non-attendance, because this gives us a pattern of non-attendance. And so, I'm looking forward to getting those names of the students at those schools so we can follow up, and I will be going to truancy court and different things. Our teachers cannot be responsible for students and their- the way they perform on FSA tests if the students are not there. And so, I believe it is the School Board's responsibility, and we are charged by statute to get this done, and this is my baby I've taken on. And I want to thank the attendance department, Mr. Lane, the psychology department, and all the departments that have been working with me to get this done. They've done a great job. They've given us a great presentation. I just want to remind them that I am looking for- I don't want to wait till 90 days. When these kids get 15 days, I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to say to that? Because I know-
I certainly can. I was making a note to myself. I can go ahead and say it now. And thank you, Ms. Stacy. We all are concerned about attendance because if a student is not here, they can't possibly learn, and we want our students to attend school. This is nothing new, the challenge that we have. We're not waiting for the 90-day period to roll by and then look and see how many students have met. Our child study teams are meeting at each of our schools already. The guidance counselors, attendants, clerks, disciplinarians, assistant principals, sometimes the principal, and certainly social work services through Matt Lane's department are also meeting. They meet, and they begin to look at any kind of attendance issues. We'll also share with you that we did have a TIP meeting, a truancy meeting, just last week. We had 61 students that we took or required that their families or the student attend that meeting just last week. Do not know how many went, but those 61 have been now forewarned. They're past the point of working within our school. They're now in the hands of our court system, and the next step for them, if they do not repair this attendance issue, would be to actually go to truancy court. And at the current time, Marion County actually has six students who are under the jurisdiction of the court, four, I think, from last year, and two more that have been added this year. So, we take attendance very, very seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Stacy, you have a question?
Okay, then, based upon what Superintendent just told me, then I must assume, since I have not received a list, that we have no students in our school district that has missed 15 days unexcused. If you count their three days tardy added to the one day, I would assume then, you're telling me, Mr. Superintendent, since I haven't gotten a list, that they don't- that there are none? Am I correct?
I do not know that, Ms. Stacy.
Okay. The whole entire point of me saying this was about the students, that I want to know who they are, and I fully understand the TIP program. I fully understand we're working hard. I've sat through many School Board workshops about it. My question still is, the 15 unexcused absences, to include three tardies, unexcused equals a day, added in, I want to know those kids' names. My question stands. No change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. And keep in mind that on November 4, if I'm correct, that we will be having a work session on attendance, so.
Well-
Just to keep in mind. Thank you.
But we need- we're supposed to know as it happens, not after, not a month after it happens.
Thank you. Mrs. Ely?
I wanted to remind parents in the community that school advisory council meetings are taking place this month. I'll be attending one tomorrow morning, and that's a meeting where you will get information about the strategic plan and how the instructional programs at the school are doing. Also, parents, if you have questions about what's happening at a child's school, this is a good time to bring them up and to get involved. You know, this is the best way you can get involved in your child's school. SAC meetings are all going on this month, for sure, and they're required to have four years. Many schools have more than four, but please call your school and find out when the next SAC meeting is and see if you can attend. It's very beneficial, and you will learn a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely. Mr. Attorney, Mr. Lake, do you have anything you want to-
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Just a few things, Mrs. Boynton. Thank you very much for your time and attention. I attended the Central Florida School Board's Coalition Meeting just yesterday, and the entire topic was spent on the legislative agenda and creating a legislative agenda very similar to the one that you've created, very similar to the one that the Association of District Superintendents has created. It's not complete yet, but I certainly will get a copy to you for your reference as you proceed in speaking with our legislators. Mr. Jackson's already talked to you about Red Ribbon Kickoff, so if you did not write it down, then October 20, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Ocal Police Department front parking lot. It's a great event. This is FTE Week, the final of the FTE Week, which we determine our funding for the fall. We call this the October Count. IPCs are currently working on data. Hang in there, Brenda. We're almost done. Are working on data. FTE calculation is much more complicated than enrollment data, but I am happy to share with you that, as you know, our projection was 42,710 students this year. We're just under that at 42,656 students, so that's all as well in that area. Another issue that I know our parents will be excited to hear, and you will also, a few years ago, our district created something called the Parent Portal that was tied in with our computer system in which parents could communicate more effectively and find out information about their students. The Parent Portal was on our old software system. The Skyward system is much more sophisticated and many more features. However, it's been a long time coming. We have not been able to get it going yet. I am here to share with you that just yesterday, we opened the student access portion of our new Parent Portal, which is called Family Access. The district will be releasing this to the schools on October 21, and then schools will be then notifying their own school communities through a procedure that has been designed and how parents can access the new Family Access. So, I know there will be a lot of excitement about that. And then the final thing I have is last Saturday, I was very proud to represent you and our entire school system, and I received a wonderful gift for our students. Members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha International Sorority held a regional meeting here in Ocal, and approximately 250 people attended. The sorority has an interesting goal for their whole international organization. Their president set a goal of seeking the donation of 1 million backpacks for children to be then given out to students in need. And I'm very happy to say that on Saturday, I collected 130 backpacks from this regional meeting. Also, they had various school supplies inside, which was a benefit to us also. They'll be distributed to our students both through the Public Education Foundation and also through our social work services. So, in fact, thanks to the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and their hard work and contribution to our community. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I have a few boards, and the first one is on October 15, the FSBA, the Florida School Board Association will be putting together the legislative agenda. You've got the information on it, where there's a new proposal to add for an elected commission of education, and I will be going to that meeting, but I would like the consensus of the Board on which way you want me to vote. So, if you want me to vote yes, Mr. James?
Voting yes for an elected-
Yes. This is in their proposal.
I do.
Okay.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes.
And Ms. Ely?
Yes.
So, when I vote, I will be voting yes for our district to put that on. Thank you for that board. I want to say, if you look in your box, Suzanne McGuire has given us notice that on November 11, the Marion County Veterans Day Celebration will start, and it's on a Wednesday, so mark your calendars for that. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Tomlin is there all the time, as well as Mr. Christian, and it's a wonderful event, you know? It's a moving event, so.
Very good.
Yeah, mark your calendars for that. On October 1, the City of Ocal had their National Resource Network Roundtable, and Mr. James and I was there, as well as Mr. Christian, Mrs. Boston Ellis, and Mrs. Dudley. And it was a wonderful event, Mr. Superintendent, and I just want to let you know, your staff did an awesome job.
Thank you.
An awesome job. And thank you for being there. And, oh- And, oh, I will say, I visited College Park, and I read to a kindergarten class, and I was so excited. The author of the book that I read from was J. Lee Curtis, and it was such a wonderful book. And then I attended the... We had a speaker come in, and he... His name was Harvey E. Oyer III, and he spoke at Osceola I, and then he went from Fesen into Anthony. And so I was at Fesen, and Mr. Jackie Bowles was there, and this book is called The American Jungle, and it's a book about one of his great-great-granduncles, who was Charlie Pierce, which Fort Pierce is named after him. It was such a wonderful event. Every child at Anthony and at Fesen got a copy of these books.
That's great.
And it was such a wonderful event. I just wanted to mention it again on how great it was, and the students really, really received him well. And one of the highlights of the stories in this book right here is that there was a hurricane in South Florida, and I shared it with the board, and this young boy, Charlie Pierce, went out on the beach right after, and guess what he found? A treasure chest from a 1,700 boat, the Santa Marder, and it was full of gold coins. We did ask him, was he still rich? And he said, well, no, but it was such an exciting story, and he was a great storyteller. And I want to thank him again publicly for, you know, coming to our district. And that's all for me. And Mr. Superintendent?
I have one more thing that I neglected to remind you of, and you know about this already, but at the Central Florida School Board's Coalition, at the next meeting, they will be offering ethics training. You will have a couple of options to do that. You know, annually, you and I are required to go through ethics training. This will be an opportunity to go to a coalition meeting. It's on November 9th, and then they will have the four hours of ethics training, and I believe it's even going to include lunch. So if you're interested, we'll get more written information and printed information to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And with that, I'm going to ask and make sure that all board members know it is required for us to take the ethics training, and I'm hoping that all of you will attend to the FSBA meeting, because at that meeting, we get that training, and it is at no cost. It's already included in our workshops and things. So, Ms. Stacy, you going to be there?
Actually, I belong to an additional coalition of school board members, and I get it free. So I'll take it free.
Well, we think it's still provided to us for free, it's just the price hasn't gone up, so we're just... It would be just really helpful if...
Okay, I understood it was like a hundred and something dollars for that. Ms. Brenda could tell us. I thought it was a hundred...
The coalition is offered for free, or you do it for free?
Oh, the coalitions for free, but the State School Board Association?
When you attend the conference, it's part of the...
Yeah, but that's like nine, eight or nine hundred.
If you do it on the web, it costs.
Okay, I can get it for free. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Stacy. Well, thank you very much. Just making sure that all board members are aware that it is required of us to take that course. And before addressing any expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members shall receive the alternative placement list for students through September 25th, 2015. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a discipline matter? Okay. Board, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 16-01, JD 16-02, JD 16-03, and JD 16-04 with educational services through the 2015-2016 school year? May I have a motion in a second?
It's moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And the motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned at 6:05 p.m.